You good?
A little sorry.
All right. Good evening, everybody. For the record, it is 5:15 PM. It's Thursday, and that's not Thursday, April 23rd. It is Thursday, May 14th. By 15 PM, we're time for the regular meeting of Wenatchee City Council. As always, we call the meeting to order. Our first item of business is pledge to our flag. So, Councilmember Bailey, would you lead us?
I will. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And for the record, we have five council members here. And just to make sure on the phone, so Councilmember Harold, are you with us?
Yes, I'm here.
Councilmember Hufaker, are you with us?
I am here.
And City Attorney Steve Smith, are you with us?
Yes, I'm here.
Great. Okay, so our first item of business today would be the consent items, which includes approval of the agenda vouchers and the minutes from the previous meetings and to complete three or four contracts. So I entertain a motion if we had one.
Your Honor, I'd make a motion that we adopt the consent items, including this evening's agenda, the vouchers, and minutes from previous meetings. That this includes a motion to accept the work performed by the contractor Gridline Skate Parks on city project number 16-1666 Hale Skate Park and further authorize the mayor to sign the final contract voucher, approval by the council to accept the work performed by the contractor KRCI on city project number 16-1665 Coannis Metow Park and further authorize the mayor to sign the final contract voucher and for the council to accept the work performed by the contractor DW Excavating on city project number 1232 Saddle Rock Phase One Interim Action and further authorize the mayor to sign the final contract voucher.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Kula, second by Councilmember Hornby, to approve this evening's agenda vouchers and the minutes from the previous meetings and to accept the work performed by the contractor Gridline Skate Parks on city project 16-1666 Hale Skate Park and further authorize the mayor to sign the final contract voucher and also to accept the work performed by contractor KRCI on city project number 16-1665 Coannis Metow Park and further authorize the mayor to sign the final contract voucher and to accept the work performed by contractor DW Excavating on project number 1232 Saddle Rock Phase One Interim Action and authorize the mayor to sign the final contract voucher.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. We do have one presentation tonight regarding Community Action Proclamation of Month. Does anybody have that for the record?
I have that, Your Honor.
Councilmember Bailey.
A proclamation, whereas the Shalane Douglas Community Action Council has made essential contributions to individuals and families across this region by creating economic opportunities and strengthening communities, and whereas community action is a robust state and local force connecting people to life-changing services and creating pathways to prosperity in 99% of all American counties, and whereas community action builds and promotes economic stability as an essential aspect of enabling and enhancing stronger communities and stable homes, and whereas community action promotes community-wide solutions to challenges throughout our cities, and whereas community action delivers innovative services and supports that create greater opportunities for families and children to succeed, and whereas community action insists on community participation and involvement, ensuring that all sectors of the community have a voice and will be heard, and whereas community action is celebrating 56 years of innovation, impact, and providing proven results for residents throughout Shalane and Douglas Counties. Now, therefore, I, Frank J. Coons, Mayor of the City of Wenatchee, do hereby proclaim May 2020 as Community Action Month in recognition of the hard work and dedication of the Shalane Douglas Community Action Council. In witness whereof, I have caused the seal of the City of Wenatchee to be affixed on this 14th day of May 2020, Frank J. Coons, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Bailey. And we'll get that to Alan Larson. And then who's on the board for the community action from our board? Do we know? Linda is? Okay, we'll make sure at least gets to Linda and then over to Alan Larson, so.
This is Linda.
Okay, we'll make sure we get that proclamation to you. All right, action items. We have a number of action items this evening, and then we have a couple of public hearing items. So we'll start with action items. The first is regarding our utility assistance program. So Finance Director Brad Posenjack.
Thank you, Mayor, for announcing me, since you might not recognize me. Good evening, Mayor, Council. It's fitting that we start off with this resolution on the heels of the community action proclamation you just did, because they help administer this program. A couple of years ago, the council adopted a program to support low-income households with their utility bills when they face financial hardships. This program is screened by Community Action and has provided up to $100 per year per customer for those who qualify. In the first two years that we've had it, this program has actually been underutilized, and we have not had, we have not had a lot of people apply for it. But in light of the current health and economic crisis, staff is asking council to approve Resolution 2020-15 that will increase this assistance from $100 per customer to $300 per customer. The eligibility requirements remain unchanged. It's still the same. People are able to go down to Community Action, and if their income levels meet the standards in here, then they're able to get a $300 credit against their utility bills. Because oftentimes, people who can't pay when it comes down to shut-off or penalties, that is kind of the trigger that helps them go and seek help. With the current crisis, we aren't doing shut-off, and we aren't charging penalties. And so some people have had their bills accumulate larger than normal. So we feel like we need to have some assistance that's larger than normal to help them keep on top of it.
So Jim and some of the other council members remember when we did the sewer rate increases, we were really concerned about the effects of the lower incomes. So we put this pool of money together, and it really hasn't been utilized very much. And so I think staff came with the idea of if we set aside this money and it's not being utilized, let's increase the amount and get it spent. So I thought it was a great idea from Brad and his staff to go ahead and get the money we've already set aside and get it out in the system. So it's really the money we set aside back when we did the sewer rate increases.
Do we have any idea how many people have taken advantage of it?
Yes, and since the program started in January of 2018, we've had about 120 that have qualified. So we've got about four to five a month that have qualified so far. We had set aside $100,000 to be able to cover this.
Sorry, Brad, how many have qualified?
120.
120 did qualify, okay. That's actually not too good.
Yeah, it's about four or five a month. We had sort of expected to see a couple hundred in the first year. So only seeing 120 in two years, two-plus years was a little bit less than we had expected.
Okay, thank you.
All right, any other questions for Brad? And we did talk about it at the Finance Committee today, and I think they were, for the most part, okay with this.
And Community Action continues to, we're just increasing the thing.
Yes.
Community Action continues to.
Yeah, Community Action is continuing to administer it and screen the applicants. So everything else about the program stays the same. It's just the dollar amount gets increased.
Well, Your Honor, I would make a motion to amend the city's current utility assistance program to increase the assistance limit from $100 to $300 until the end of 2020.
Second. A motion by Councilmember Bailey and a second by Councilmember Cuevas to amend the assistance program to increase the assistance from $100 to $300 until the end of 2020. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, Brad. All right, a little bit more work as we continue to design the new city hall. So Aaron.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Aaron Kelly, Operations Manager. Here tonight with two contract amendments, number two and number three, for ARC Architects for the new city hall. These two amendments were added services as we requested from ARC during part of our design review. These two amendments cover audiovisual improvements and also site design, such as the parking lot and the art noles out front. As we've analyzed some of the parking, it basically just kept on taking more time from the engineers. So these amendments actually reflect just the time that's already been spent on this project. So what we're looking for tonight, our staff is recommending that city council authorize the mayor to sign the contract amendment number two and number three to the professional services agreement for Wenatchee City Hall on behalf of the city with ARC Architects for additional design services for the Wenatchee City Hall project number 1716. The total of these two amendments total will be about $13,710. We're still basically on track for our budget. This is just basically to increase the contract with ARC to cover this amount of work that's actually been going on.
So assuming we pass this tonight, then what are the next steps? When are we going to see final drawings? When would we go to bid? When does the council need to make sort of a final decision?
So they're pretty much wrapped up with the final bid documents. We could actually be pushing to go out to bid in the next month to bring some questions up of when strategically we want to be able to go out to bid and when we want to.
I would think, just because of everything that's going on, that we should probably have one more kumbaya moment with the council before we get it to final. I'm assuming you can go to bid, and we can get the bids and then decide not to build.
Correct.
But I sort of feel like we got to have one more sort of, make sure everyone's on the same page and understands, you know, Travis and Jose are a bit new and kind of back up, and how did we get here, and what was the plan, and how did we pay for it, and all that sort of stuff before we start construction downstairs.
Okay. A presentation possibly?
Yeah, just sort of, we've been at this for the better part of four years. So it might be just good just to make sure we're all on the right page. It makes sense to get this all the way to full design, but I think with everything going on, just one more sort of, before we all hold hands and jump off a cliff together, that at least we know what the landing point might be. Yeah.
I think that's a really good idea, Your Honor. I, there's been a lot of changes and, you know, things are moving. It'd be good to be able to kind of see what the final is going to,
yeah.
where we are on this whole thing. I think it's really good.
Yeah. We'll make sure we do that before we get out to bid.
Yep.
Yeah, I agree with that. And I would also like to see if we can get, you know, there was a lot of information, budgets, and design concept drawings and things like that. If we could get those to Travis and Jose sooner than later so they can start reviewing it, maybe?
Yes, definitely.
You know, I had a question on the packet thing here where civic engineers scope here says, "Work on their original design proposal in an effort to address the art mound removal." Where are we on that?
At this point, we have designed not to take out the art mounds. So initially, we thought there was a way that we could and use that for parking. And so that was in the original design. Since then, we haven't been successful in trying to remove those. So we've actually had to design around the art mounds.
Okay. It's definitely not the Mona Lisa's, what the heartburn is on that, but.
Yeah. We, let's put this way, we tried pretty hard to convince the feds and artists to build artwork other places, and we can make it better, and they didn't want anything to do with that. So we hired some consultants to help with that, and we obviously didn't get that very far, so. You win some, but you lose some, right?
I guess so.
Occasionally, you get one rained out, right?
One of the most valuable dirt in town.
Yeah.
So at this point, it's just totally prohibited to remove it?
As far as we know, yes. That is totally prohibited to remove it.
And is that forever or certain amount of time? What's, I don't understand how we got stuck with that thing.
So we bought a federal building with federal art in it, and the federal art gets to stay.
You and I, Keith, probably never lived long enough to see it disappear.
It'll be there. It'll still be there, yeah.
Get your ashes spread on it. There we go.
Yeah, it's part of the purchase and sell agreement. We agreed that that was, it's fine. It's just, again, it's, is what it is.
Thank you.
Maybe we could put it up on the roof, because the whole idea was that it would look like a four-leaf clover from space. So if we put it up on the roof, you could still see it.
Yeah. I just feel sorry for the guy that's got to mow the grass, because one of these days, something's going to bad happen there.
Well, exactly. And, you know, it used to be that you could get a type of lawnmower that would do the little hover, and that made it workable. But I guess that's the angle I look at, is the thing just isn't even very feasible to maintain at this point. Anyway, I'll shut up about it.
Any other comments? All right, I'd entertain a motion if we had one.
Your Honor, I'd make a motion that the council authorize the mayor to sign contract amendment number two and number three to the professional services agreement for Wenatchee City Hall on behalf of the city with ARC Architects for additional design services for the Wenatchee City Hall project number 1716.
We got a motion by Councilmember Kula and a second by Councilmember Sparza to authorize the mayor to sign contract amendment number two and three to the professional services agreement for the Wenatchee City Hall on behalf of the city with ARC Architects for additional design services for the Wenatchee City Hall project number 1716. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, Aaron.
Thank you.
Hi, Charlotte. Seems like you're coming to all the meetings these days.
Busy. Charlotte Mitchell, Capital Projects Manager for Parks and Rec. So what we have here is the Phase Two grant agreement with the Department of Ecology for Saddle Rock. This is for the final phase of the Saddle Rock project. It consists of $1.12 million from Ecology, and our share is $124,000 roughly. $112 of that will come out of the general fund, and then the rest is made up with staff time. I can talk about the scope of the project if anybody's interested. We're going to be up there this summer. We're going to dig some test pits for the geotech, because we're going to talk about realigning the steep portion of the trail. And so they'll be up there digging and doing some research about how the earth is up there. And then we're going to do some further delineation of the arsenic contents with what they call an XRF. It's this cool thing that they just aim at the ground, and I think within like 30 seconds or 10, sometimes you have a reading of the arsenic content. And then over the fall and winter, they're going to do some design work. And then we'll get it out to bid in the spring of 2021 and do construction then. So assuming you approve this, then following this, I will bring an agreement with geoengineers who designed the first project contract for them.
Construction sometime next summer, and then we'll be sort of done with that.
Yeah, then they have to write up a final report based on the findings and how the construction went. And then it goes to Ecology, and it goes out for comment, and then we're done.
Get around, because I need to show you this right now. Now, there's a lot.
Not sure that was a question, was it?
Don't think so.
So I would entertain a motion if we had one.
Your Honor, I'll make a motion for the city council to authorize the mayor to sign the grant agreement for Saddle Rock Phase Two Interim Action between the City of Wenatchee and State of Washington Department of Ecology for the Gold Knob Prospect Site, also known as Saddle Rock Park.
Second. Motion by Councilmember Hornby, second by Councilmember Bailey, to authorize the mayor to sign grant agreement for Saddle Rock Phase Two Interim Action between the City of Wenatchee and the State of Washington Department of Ecology for the Gold Knob Prospect Site, also known as Saddle Rock. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Charlotte. Hi, Brooklyn. You got a couple of items today, don't you?
Yeah, this one and then a public hearing.
Public hearing.
Good evening, Brooklyn Holton Housing and Community.
Invalid selection.
The City of Wenatchee. Hopefully not invalid. So in front of you, we have an amendment to a contract between Wenatchee and the US, or sorry, Washington State Office of Financial Management for a census outreach. We've been managing the Complete Account Committee for a region, and with the work that we've been able to do through contracting with CAFE, a local organization in Wenatchee, OFM approached us and asked if we'd be willing to duplicate the efforts that we are doing in Shalane Douglas and expand. And that would come with additional funding for not only the expansion into Okanagan and Grant, but to also increase funding for my time. And so this was brought to the Finance Committee in April, and they approved the increase. The city is floating the invoices, so CAFE invoices us for their time and the effort. And then through that invoice, I added my time and materials, and then we invoice OFM. And so we're kind of floating that fund each month. So that's probably the biggest budget impact. But we end up getting funding for my time. And that's probably, but we're not expending any funding from any department budget. Any questions on that?
And how are we doing on our census stuff?
We're actually doing really well. So I'm on a state advisory group that was created in response to what's happening with COVID. And so we've been coordinating a lot of different messaging. OFM has now approved new expenses in terms of TV, radio, mailers, things that weren't otherwise approved. And so we've been kind of vamping up some consistent messaging to get that out this month. And then we're also, a lot of our local individuals have been working with what's called trusted messengers. So they're able to actually go in and choose 20 or 50 individuals that are close to them, that they're seeing on a somewhat regular basis and doing more individual-pointed effort to do census completion rather than just census awareness. So they're actually helping one-on-one. So we have more people helping, but those people are catching a smaller group each time. But that's been.
So the percentage is sort of going up? I know we were.
Yep, yeah, Washington State is actually the first one to reach a percentage higher than we did in 2010. We just got over 63% completion. Shalane and Douglas are doing really good. Grant and Okanagan need some support in some of their more rural communities. So we're vamping up some of those trusted messenger positions.
Perfect. All right, if you have any questions for Brooklyn? If not, I'd entertain a motion. It's item D.
Well, Your Honor, I would move that the council authorize the mayor to sign amendment number one to contract number K2883 and any applications, certifications, assurances, or subcontracts necessary as a result of the amendment.
Second. Motion by Councilmember Bailey, second by Councilmember Hornby to authorize the mayor to sign amendment number one to contract K2883 and any applications, certifications, assurances, or subcontracts necessary as a result of the amendment. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, Brooklyn. See you in a minute.
Okay.
Hi, Jeremy. How are you, sir?
I'm doing well, you?
Good. Building a water line, huh?
Yes, Jeremy Hoover, Senior Utility Engineer. Here to talk about the Skyline Reservoir Transmission Line project. This has come in front of council a couple of times, but we're here to get authorization to allow the mayor to sign the contract for the construction of the replacement of the water line and construction of a little bit of storm drain. The project is, it's been on the, been on our radar since about 2012, when we did the last comprehensive plan. We carried it over to the most current comprehensive plan that was adopted in 2018. And we're going to, with this project, replace the existing 1952-era steel transmission line up to the reservoir, as well as an existing concrete building that is really decrepit. It doesn't have a floor. The valve system inside of it is old and has been cobbled together several different times to make it work. So we've been working with BHC consultants to design their improvements. The final design drawings were completed at the beginning of this year. We put it out to bid in March. We were going to open bids in April, but decided that, given the situation, we would allow the contractors some additional time to put their bids together. The contract was, or the bids were opened last Thursday. Pipkin Construction was a low-bid contractor. We had a total of eight contractors bid on it, and the costs ranged from $736,000 to almost $1 million, with the average bid being right in the middle of the engineer's estimate, which is $825,000 to $875,000. So we believe we've got a really good price, approximately $100,000 below the engineer's estimate for the construction of the water line. We're also going to be doing some improvements to the reservoir overflow, which is a requirement from the Department of Health. And to that end, we're extending the storm drain up Skyline from approximately Apple Land to the new reservoir line corridor.
And as we talked about at the Finance Committee today, you plan on shutting down Skyline Drive for a period of time to traffic?
Yes, we pretty much have to. The utilities that are in the roadway, it's a rat's nest. There's old PUD lines, there's new PUD lines, there's R lines, there's Frontier lines, they're all over the place. So being able to put a common trench down and allow for traffic to get around, it's just not feasible. Add to the fact that the valve building in the reservoir is elevated some 20, 30 feet above the adjacent roadway grade of Skyline, we're going to end up having to take a lot of dirt out in order to get that installed. So, yeah, but closing down the lanes of traffic, it's only going to impact a couple of people. Skyline does have a significant amount of traffic on it, but we're not going to be precluding access. The only people who are going to be directly affected are going to be the adjacent property owners right next to the reservoir, and I believe one property owner immediately to the southeast. But they will be granted access throughout the course of construction. If you're coming up Red Apple, you'll have to make a ride at Apple Land, or if you want to come back in the other direction, you will have access from number two Canyon Road.
And how long do you anticipate that disclosure is going to be for?
What about the residence that has the driveway that we got to go through?
That's the Pope's, and they. That's the Pope's, and they are aware of the situation, and they will be granted access at all times. They will be able to get in and out of their property. I'm not going to try to make them walk through a construction zone to get up to the house. That's, that would be an unacceptable scenario.
Ruth, you got to speak into your microphone a little louder so that.
The contract duration is actually 100 working days, and the only reason that it's so long is because the lead time for the concrete, I don't know if that's.
You're fine.
Okay. Lead time for the concrete building, going through the building permit process, which should be able to be expedited. Worst-case scenario puts that at about two and a half months, but we think we can get that pushed up a little bit. The extra time, like I said, was just for the, for the building, but we are going to need to keep the road closed during the duration until that last little bit of construction's done. It's going to be a long term, but it's only going to affect a couple of people, and they will have access to their house.
Yeah, there's that.
Jeremy.
There's the effect to the other people that use that as a way to drive to the hospital and those things. They'll be able to go down Cherry and other scenes, so it'll be inconvenience, but if it's the only way you can get done, it's the only way you can get done.
And there's going to be signage up at the new roundabout from there all the way through there, so it won't be as if you're coming into an immediate dead end and didn't know it was coming, so.
All right. Any other questions for Jeremy? If not, I think it's a motion to approve Pipkin Construction with the low bid.
Your Honor, I'll make a motion for the City Council to award the contract for construction of the Skyline Reservoir Transmission Main and Utility Improvement Phase One, project number 1704, to Pipkin Construction in the amount of $736,615.52, and further authorize the mayor to sign a contract on behalf of the city.
We have a motion by Councilmember Sparza and a second by Councilmember Kulas to award the contract for the construction of the Skyline Reservoir Transmission Main and Utility Improvement Phase One, project number 1704, to Pipkin Construction in the amount of $736,615.52, and further authorize the mayor to sign a contract on behalf of the Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
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 Posed. Motion carries. Thanks, Jeremy. All right, we have two public hearing items tonight. Public hearing items will be done a little bit differently. I don't know if there's any members of the community on the phone, but I will clearly ask when it's time for public comment. So our first public hearing item, we'll hear from staff, and then we'll turn over to the public and then back over to the council for any action. The first is regarding our 2013 through 2019 consolidated plan. So Brooklyn, come on up and give us your presentation.
Good evening. I have my computer because I'm also monitoring the chat option.
Okay.
For it, which we have some comments. So there's a lot of information in front of you guys, so I'm going to try and simplify it. The CARES Act provided funding to our CDVG program specifically for a response to COVID. This funding came with some flexibility in terms of caps that are no longer applied to it, that would normally restrict what the funds could be used for. It is also able to be utilized for something called emergency income payments, which is not something that we have traditionally utilized it for, but it can support things like rent, mortgage, and utilities. So that is one of the categories that we're looking at. It is also eligible to support businesses through assistance, whether that's grants, a loan, technical assistance, training, so that funding is also flexible. And then it's also able to support other public services, which could be considered food systems, the Literacy Council, which we support through our regular funding, is an example of a public service. And so in order to utilize the funding for these, for these options, we have to demonstrate to the federal government that we have a plan. And in order to do that most efficiently, we had to update our citizen participation plan, which the way that we've developed it is part of our consolidated plan, so both of those items were updated. This allowed us to expedite the citizen participation process that would normally require a 30-day comment period, and it went down to a five-day comment period, so that was published in the Wenatchee World on May 8th, leading, giving notice of the public hearing this evening. And then the next one was the Annual Action Plan, which is what was adopted about a year ago, or less than a year ago. Our 2019 program started October 1st of last year, and so to allow us to spend that funding more quickly than waiting to adopt our 2020 plan, we amended our current plan. And so those are the three attachments that are included in your packet, and were also available on the website for public review prior to this evening. The funding amounts that are recommended are $65,000, so we received a total $139,593. And the recommended projects and amounts are emergency income payments for $65,000, assistance for businesses of $65,000, and food system or food insecurities of $9,593. The, some of this funding is able to be utilized for, like what I had said, emergency income payments. So a common term is rent assistance. This can support rent, but in addition to what rent assistance can provide, it can also support mortgage and utilities. So one conversation is looking at the program you just approved and increase our funding to, to partner with our own utility support program. That would be an opportunity to leverage this funding and also utilize the process that's already taking place to find those in our community that have been affected by COVID. And then assistance for businesses, we are looking at a partnership with the port, and they have an application process and capacity to administer these funds to our small businesses, specifically in the City of Wenatchee, with no admin expenses, or no admin portion. The emergency income payments, I'm going to go back to that really quick. We had interest from a couple of different organizations in terms of needing support, and I think through discussion, the housing authority was able to provide the lowest amount of an admin fee for that, and so we're exploring conversations with them about what they would be able to provide in terms of a process that could be tied into our coordinated entry system that also would support the City of East Wenatchee if they're able to look at funding for emergency income payments, so that we are sharing a data source and an intake process. And then the food system support, that is still in conversation. I attend a weekly food systems meeting that's hosted by the Community Foundation, and so we're discussing the best way to coordinate that. East Wenatchee is supporting the food system as well, so we want to make sure that our dollars are done efficiently and.
Invalid selection.
Why does that keep happening to me? So that is a lot of information. I do have some public comments, but I also wanted to see if anyone had any comments or questions.
Is food assistance the food bank?
It can be the food bank. It doesn't have to be the food bank, so.
Other options besides the food bank?
Yep, so, yeah, so different mobile meals. If there's any, like, low-income senior housing that normally supplies a lunch.
Got it.
Or a dinner option, it could even just go to help support an organization like Aging Adult Care that helps to support seniors that might not have access to food. So there's a couple of different resources that we could support through that.
Got it, thank you. So any questions for Brooklyn? The reason we're sort of hurrying this along is we want to get that money out in the system as quickly as possible, which was what we directed her to do three weeks ago is, go fast.
Thank you for the three weeks.
Yeah. All right, so any questions from the council of Brooklyn? If not, I'll turn over to any members of the public. Let's start, Brooklyn, with the public comment that you got, and then I'll ask anybody online or on the phone if they have any comment.
Okay. So a combination of comments from Alan Walker, he's with the Shalan Douglas Community Action Council, and they also provide a rent assistance program, which could be a portion of that economic emergency income payment, and was asking about the CDVG CARES Act from the state. We will be receiving right around $1.3 million in CARES Act funding. The information is still getting provided to us. There's a call on Monday that we'll be getting some information on, and the way that we are distributing that funding is still in discussion. And one of the reasons that question came up is because originally we had thought that the emergency income payments.
Invalid selection.
For, for rent mortgage utilities that was in arrears, so past payments. As of today, I received an email from our HUD office in Seattle.
Invalid selection.
Information was incorrect, and that we should be able to provide funding to pay back rent that might have been missed in April. And so looking at the CDVG CARES funding that comes through us as an entitlement and the CARES Act funding that's going to come through us through the state, those should have the same eligibility within funding, and so even if the CDVG funding from our entitlement goes to the emergency income, that should be able to pay arrears, which they're sharing that the Community Action Council, it would make it a much easier option, whether they, you know, if they're allocated any funding to pay past the rent and mortgage, because it is something that we're already seeing, and the moratorium on eviction.
Invalid selection.
At the end of this month, and so there's a large concern about housing stability starting in June.
And any other comments? That was it? Want to comment?
Oh, yeah, sorry, yeah. That was the only one there.
All right. Any members of the audience that are on our audio wish to comment on this public hearing item regarding our CDVG fund allocation? Hearing nobody on the phone, and you don't have anybody else that's participated, so I will then turn it over to the council for any action they may be willing to take.
Your Honor, I'd make a motion that we adopt the following amendments to the 2013-19 Consolidated Action Plan, Participation Plan, 2019 Annual Action Plan. I authorize the mayor to sign all related applications, certifications, assurances, and waivers, again, to the 2013-2019 Consolidated Plan, City Wenatchee Citizen Participation Plan, and the 2019 Annual Action Plan.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Kulas, second by Councilmember Hornby, to adopt the amendments and authorize the mayor to sign all related applications, certifications, and assurances and waivers for the 2013-2019 Consolidated Plan, the City of Wenatchee Citizen Participation Plan, and the 2019 Annual Action Plan.
Any discussion?
Just one quick question. Qualifications on this, I mean, earlier with the utility.
Mm-hmm, yep.
Thing, that was, as I understand it, that's what, 88% of?
Um, is it 88 or 80?
88% of median, okay. I guess my question is, we've got all these pots.
Right.
Pots of money coming in here, are the qualifications, you know, the thresholds the same, or are every one of these things different?
Yeah, they align well. If it's 88, that's a little bit higher than CDVG, so CDVG is 80%.
Okay.
Of, of your area median income, and so it would be pretty similar, yeah. You'd be seeing the same. One thing that's unique about this CDVG CV specific funding is that the income determination is based on the current environment of their income, and so if anybody is needing assistance, there's a very large portion of individuals who would recommend, who would record a zero income right now, and so the likelihood of anyone not qualifying, that is seeking assistance, is probably going to be pretty low, based on the amount of resources we have compared to the need, so.
Yeah, okay, good. I guess what struck me about that was, you know, see all of these different programs and whatever, having all kinds of.
Yep.
Different thresholds that would make your life miserable, but.
I would agree. They're not always the same.
And it'd also be, you know, you qualify here, but you don't qualify there, and all this kind of stuff, so.
Yeah.
Good, that's.
Yep, and the Community Foundation has been hosting a lot of weekly meetings that both myself and Lori Barnett, she's kind of my counterpart in East Wenatchee, have been attending together to make sure that we are coordinating and trying to make it as easy for those that do need assistance, that they're not having to apply to multiple locations.
Thank you.
All right, any other questions or comments? So we've got a motion, a second, so all those in favor of the motion say aye.
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 Posed. Motion carries. Thanks, Brooklyn. Thanks for your work getting that done, and look forward to getting that money out in the system.
Me too.
And our last public hearing item is regarding a development agreement between the City of Wenatchee, Winco Foods, and Kellogg Properties LLC. So our Public Works Director, Rob Jammerman, you want to present that?
Sure, so do we get the computer back up? Please. Do you have the mouse or don't? Who's driving here? This will be really quick. So we're here tonight to hold a, present information to the council and hold a public hearing for the Winco Development Agreement. Let me get that to start there for me, Jess. Yeah, there we go, thank you. So, a risk real quick, we, as you know, Winco has purchased the ShopCo building owned by the Kelloggs, just to the north of the mall there, and as part of their building permit application, they had to submit a traffic impact analysis, and through that process, we identified two mitigations that they needed to do as part of that building permit application. They are going to be modifying the traffic signal at the intersection of Maple and North Wenatchee Avenue to provide a protected left turn movement for traffic exiting eastbound to northbound, to help with the levels of service at that intersection. And then they also are dedicating right away at the, at the southwest corner of that intersection, the northeast corner of their property, to allow for a future right turn lane. In your packet is a description of that, and the reason that we had to do the development agreement is because there is an existing pole sign in that right-of-way dedication area that belonged to ShopCo that, that Winco will take over, and because we don't have any plans for the project right now, we are allowing the sign pole to remain, and there's a cost-sharing agreement in that agreement that if they, if we move forward with a project within the next five years, we're going to compensate Winco some, some sign relocation costs, and if we move forward with a project five years or later, it's all on Winco, and they have to bring that, that sign into compliance anyway within 10 years for our sign code. So that's the only reason for this development agreement. We're, we're happy with this mitigation, and maybe the mayor might want to speak a little bit to that negotiation that we did with them, and so that's, that's all I have really for the presentation on the development agreement.
Yeah, it's been quite a little process. Obviously, Winco is leasing the property from the Kelloggs. The Kelloggs own the underlying dirt, so the traffic association associated with the new Winco store, obviously, we needed to do a few things there. They were fine with the changes to the light. It wasn't the Winco folks as much as the Kellogg family didn't want to give up any right-of-way. They had that dirt for a lot of years, and how dare we ask for any of it? So we had quite a little negotiation back and forth. We'd get in agreement with Winco, they'd go to Dan Kellogg, he'd have to go to his mother, and then he'd have to come back, and so we worked through this process quite a little, quite a length of time. I think the other thing that was interesting is, I think, under our zoning code, I don't know how many parking stalls are required, 350 for lack of a, and I think Winco required 450 for any store that they do. So, you know, it was around 448, 452, depending on how much right-of-way, and we had to redesign the parking, and Glenn's team, they're great. at some point in the future. So it seemed like a reasonable deal. Their building permits have been issued, they're actively doing this. This is their, they're doing three ShopCos at once, so they actively went out and, as ShopCo went bankrupt or whatever they did, they went and found a bunch of ShopCo locations they liked. And so they are remodeling three of them as we speak. I don't know where the other two are, but ours and two others. So they're fast going at it, and I think this is a pretty reasonable agreement for the city. We weren't going to do this without the right-of-way, because if we do this project in five, seven, eight years and have to buy the right-of-way with a Winco on it, that could get really expensive. But it made sense to get the deal done now. So any questions of Rob? Any members of the audience that are on the phone have any questions for the City Council or for Rob?
I got one thing. I don't know if it got caught enough in the resolution that indicates that it's a left-hand turn instead of a right-hand turn. Did that get picked up?
So there's two parts to this. There's the left-hand turn that Winco's going to do, and then there's an area for a right-hand turn lane.
Correct.
All right, so there should be some left-hand turn stuff and some right-hand turn stuff. Any members of the audience wish to make public comment on this public hearing item? Hearing none? You got any emails, like Brooklyn did? She got people emailing her about her stuff. Nothing?
No emails.
All right. All right, so I will then close the public hearing portion of this and turn it over to the council for any action they may be willing to take.
Your Honor, I'll make a motion that the council approve the mayor's signed development agreement and approval of Resolution 2020-14, adopting the development agreement between the City of Wenatchee, Kellogg Properties, and Winco, which authorizes the mayor to sign the agreement.
Second. Motion by Councilmember Hornby, second by Councilmember Bailey, to approve the development agreement in Resolution 2020-14, adopting the development agreement between the City of Wenatchee, Kellogg Properties, and Winco, which authorizes the mayor to sign the agreement. Second. Motion by Councilmember Hornby, second by Councilmember Bailey, to approve the development agreement in Resolution 2020-14, adopting the development agreement between the City of Wenatchee, Kellogg Properties, and Winco, and authorize the mayor's signature. Discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, Rob. Mayor's report. I'm not sure what I'm going to report on. I got two or three or four things. Obviously, I think I'll start with some of the COVID-related stuff. Obviously, I've been meeting with our department heads pretty regularly. I think Laura's interpretation of the governor's sort of reopening plan for government as phase two, at least with respect to our offices and having employees back at work. So we've made a policy that, for the most part, we're going to start our employees back in the office building a week after the governor says it's okay to go back to work. So if he says June 1st, it would be June the 8th. If he changes it to June the 15th, then it would be June 22nd. But we sort of made an administrative decision to go about a week after to give staff, or give employees time to find daycare, and those other sorts of things that they may be trying to deal with. So that's sort of our general policy. I think Rob's got most of his folks sort of back to work. I think parks are, you'll see more parks maintenance folks out there. I think they're one or two short of being full. So most of the folks are still working from home, but I think that's been a pretty good little process. We've been working really hard, just trying to make sure we're doing the right things. I think if you read, and we're developing some policies about requiring everybody inside to be wearing masks and that sort of stuff. So I think as we get back to normal, you'll see a lot more people wearing the masks and doing that stuff, as people sort of meander through the building, both buildings. Sounds like that the lineage water right transfer has been signed and sent to us, so I think Steve Smith has that in his office, so I'll be signing that first part of next week, I'm guessing. So we'll get that off to ecology and get the transfer papers done. So we'll end up with a non-consumptive water right, and then we'll sit down with staff and figure out the process to make it consumptive, and whether we do it with regional, or we got a little bit of work to do to sort of Jessica and Rob and the team and Laura, just to figure out sort of what we do with it next. On North Wenatchee Avenue, we're getting ready to sign the paperwork to put all those lots in place and get rid of the, there was a private road, and get all that stuff gone away. It sounds like we're about ready to record that. And then the property behind the insurance company
Nationwide.
Nationwide. The DeCamps have made us a full price offer on that, so I think we're probably going to execute an agreement with them, and you'll probably see that in the next couple of weeks. You know, they were renting some parking from us for their save mart for the garden center, and I think that went really well for them when they liked some off-site parking. So when I said, "You interested, you might just buy that from us," and they said, "Yeah." Actually wrote us a check. I don't know where it is. They said, "Yeah, here it is, yeah." The same price we've offered everybody, $24 a square foot, minus a little bit for some easements. So Matt's been working on that, and I think that's probably going to happen in the next month or so. I'm assuming this Smitty's deal is still going to be a good go on that as well, so I think we're, most of that is, I think, moving along pretty good. Laura, you got stuff to add?
I've got one.
Okay. Councilmembers, anything going on? I mean, not really having any. Are you doing a lot of the health department stuff?
Oh, yeah.
Thank you for being involved in those. You're having, like, every other day, board meetings?
Pretty much. Yeah, we recently sent a letter to the governor, hoping for, you know, the governor to consider a half variance on his phases, but we got shot down within 12 hours. We spent hours on that thing, which I kind of knew. I told the board, I said, "I don't think we're going to," I mean, we don't qualify for it.
Yeah.
But it was a try.
And I don't know if you guys get the monthly, the daily updates from Stan and all the reports, but, you know, we had 10 new cases a couple of days ago, and
Yeah.
I was on the call today, and they're coming from everywhere, right? One over here, one over there, one over here, one over here.
Sometimes yes, and sometimes no. Sometimes it is, we're having clusters.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But the one they talked about today, when they said specifically
Yeah.
Yeah.
The 10 that came in were from everywhere.
Yeah. So it's obviously still out there and still sort of moving around, and so I don't know how to predict any of that sort of stuff. So we have had some complaints on the homeless stuff down on Worthing Street, and we're working hard with our hands tied behind the back. I don't know if you saw the Washington State Supreme Court ruled that if you're living in your car, it's considered your house, and so we have to go through the eviction process, can't move it. So we got another arm tied behind our back on Worthing Street.
Might be the house, but not the sidewalk.
Sidewalk's a different issue, and we do struggle with that, but the better part would have been to tow the vehicles, and, but if you're living there, we can't. So we really are just, and then we've been dealing a little bit with some cruising. There's been some cruising off and on. I think a couple of weeks ago, the Apple Blossom Saturday, I thought that went pretty well. I think last Saturday, there was some more cruising, and that might have been a little bit more, a little bit more aggressive, and so I don't, I think maybe this weekend there won't be. But the other part that now has come with that, the high school kids have figured out what cruising is, and they're not very happy about not being able to graduate. So now the two high schools want to get together with all their parents and cruise on whatever day of the week would have been graduation. So that'd be, you know, 1,500 cars or something. Chief's trying to figure that out, and I don't know.
East Mon Avenue would be a good spot for that.
Yeah, so I, again, I don't know how cruising's coming back, but it, so trying to deal with that and
Same way the first time it came in, Frank. Same way.
Yeah, I know.
Somebody has to invent it.
Yeah. So again, that's just been some interesting stuff we've been dealing with off and on over the last little bit. Anything else, councilmembers? Well, thanks, Ruth, for being on those calls, and I know it's been a lot of work, and I think until we get all the way down that list of stuff, it's going to be a while before. I'm just hopeful that stage two is stage two, and he sticks with his June 1st opening date and start trying to get people back to work. And then one other thing on the CARES Act is for, you know, there's some additional CARES money. I think you've seen a million dollars and $39,000 or something. We're still trying to figure out what applies, what doesn't apply, so we're going to spend some time. Laura's been looking at it, and Glenn and Brad, and we'll get back to you the next, probably the next time we meet, hopefully with a better idea of what we think it applies to. It is one of these things that you have to ask for reimbursement. So if we go out and, you know, give $250,000 to whoever to do whatever they're doing, we got to go ask for reimbursement, and what if they don't reimburse us? So it is a little bit of, we got to spend some time sort of thinking about what the right approach is and how we want to spend that, so, and what qualifies and doesn't qualify, and so we'll have to do some thinking about that over the next couple of weeks. Hopefully, in the two weeks, we'll have more guidance and we can get a clear direction from the council. I think that's what the East Wenatchee City Council is talking about tonight, is what to do with their $400,000 allocation or something, so. All right. Anything else for the good of the order? All right, we're adjourned.